You can pull them up front too here if you'd like, so you can see the screens.
And Mayor will turn on the back monitors to protect us. Welcome everyone to the regular meeting in Trinidad City Council, February 20th, 2024. The time is now 6:00 PM. As a matter of housekeeping, Mayor Griego has asked me to chair tonight's meeting. Also, Kim has asked all attendees, please, when addressing council or council addressing attendees, we'll use the microphones provided. It makes for a better, permanent, and durable recording of the meeting. With that, Mr. Murphy, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anyone's wearing a hat tonight, just kindly request that you take it off for the duration of the meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. With that, item one is the roll call.
Devono.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Trugel.
Here.
Ogletree.
Here.
Griego.
Here.
Williamson.
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion. So move. Second?
Second.
Vote?
Shu.
Yes.
Trugel.
Yes.
Ogletree.
Yes.
Griego.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Devono.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes, thank you. Item three, policy items and staff reports. 3A is the Lodging Tax Advisory Board update. We have Ashley Ryan to present to that.
Everybody? Good evening. So this is our first city council presentation. Thank you guys for having me. Appreciate you letting me come and catch you guys up on what we have actually been doing. So I am the board chairperson, Ashley Ryan. The tourism manager that works with me is Marty Packett. First on this page, here's our mission. Our mission is to improve the quality of life of our residents through tourism. We are responsible for promoting our community as a desirable destination in a sustainable, environmentally responsible, and transparent way. Our goal is to lessen the tax burden on our residents and to create social and economic activities for residents and local businesses. My vice chair is Jason Decker. Other members are Joe Coslitz, Amanda Courth, and Chris Millery. In May, we had our inaugural meeting. Officers were elected. We joined Care for Colorado with the CTO and Leave No Trace, also in May. In June, we approved the renewal with KCRT for our annual contract. We scheduled our retreat for July 25th. We discontinued the out front billboard and we became we did our participation in destination stewardship with the CTO. July, our session, we set our goals for three years for 2024. Our goal is positive percent growth in revenues and visitor count, new city event, and secure three to five grants. Our 2025 goal is a winter campaign to increase growth from December through March, a second city event or a signature event, and a full-time city staff support person. In 2026, we'd like to see every room booked in town for an event or a certain timeframe, and of course, positive growth. We created our marketing plan and set the budget at $175,000 and developed, began developing our marketing RFP. In August, we approved our mission statement. We approved our goals. We requested RFP funding from you. We received our destination blueprint grant, and the city manager and tourism manager approved revising and printing the Trinidad Visitor's Guide. In September, we recommended space to create upgrade expenditures. We had a joint meeting with Parks and Rec Board member Dawn Richardson. We attended the Governor's Tourism Conference. The tourism manager and the city manager approved advertising in Colorado Vacation Guide with the CTO. In October, we get an approval for the IRL for use at Winterfest. That's the lights. We distributed the RFP to many, many marketing firms. We also recommended to the council of $12,000 in lodging reserve funds be allocated to support the Smithsonian exhibit, which we were gearing up to in that time. I also attended the CTO's winter media reception to promote Trinidad and winter activities that we had planned, such as Winterfest. In November, we had our legislative roundtable. We attended that, and then we recommended, we selected Vista Works, or you might also see them mentioned as Destination IQ for our city marketing. In December, we allocated $10,000 that went to the Homegrown Music Series. It's been happening various weekends. We had our kickoff meeting with Vista Works to discuss our goals and planning. We recommended Pick-up Bar Media for photo and video assets at a cost of $2,500. In January, we had an approval of the marketing budget, and I attended the Travel and Adventure Expo in Denver, Colorado on January 20th and 21st. February, just this past month, we have recommended allocating $5,000 of the local arts and cultural programs funding to AR Mitchell. An additional $5,000 are recommended to be allocated from the same funding to Main Street Live. We also recommended allocating $2,500 of the local arts and cultural programs funding to the Trinidad Triggers. We recommended allocating $3,000 from the miscellaneous marketing request line items to Gravel Adventure Field Guide. They will be doing an advertorial in the Radivest, on the Radivest website. The next page is the advertising and marketing budget. This is the budget that we set for the year of 2024. The retainer for, if you see at the top, the retainer for Vista Works was $60,000. That is broken down beneath that in all the services they provide under that retainer. The additional projects and services, these are estimated budget line items for a total of
That's not this.
$94,805. And then we have ads and expenses
I was just wondering if you had the paperwork.
that we have already there at the bottom for a total of $49,195. Marty? So in addition to those line items that you see listed in the marketing and advertising budget, or included in that advertising and marketing budget, we have discussed the best way to move forward with marketing and advertising our city, to be fiscally responsible and to see a great return on our investment. And social media is one of the big pieces of that. So they'll be working on Facebook pages, on a variety of websites. The Visit from Net Colorado website, the Colorado Tourism Office's website. In addition to everything that we put on the local website calendar of events will also now go on the Colorado Tourism Office's website as well, on their calendar of events. So it makes it more statewide. We have, as Ashley mentioned earlier, we've continued our contract with KCRT. So we are supporting our local businesses as well with our marketing and advertising. And she also mentioned that there's we have engaged a local photographer as well to do some photography and some videography for the tourism office. She also mentioned the visitor guide. So we're currently revising the visitor guide that is, we no longer have any more copies, and it was a little bit outdated. So we have engaged Cone Marketing. So Cone, actually, they have a presence in Trinidad as well. And so they will be revising that visitor guide for us. We're looking at maybe having them ready and printed and ready for distribution by the beginning of May. Sometimes that timeline is a little wishy-washy with revisions and getting things done, and it's dependent upon the printer as well. So we're, got our fingers crossed for May, but in any case, it will be ready for the 2024 tourism season. We're also discussing a photo contest. So engaging local photographers and videographers in a photo contest so that we can bring together all the talent that we have in the city, find out where their expertise lies, whether it's architecture, or it's events, or if it's, I don't know, just various photographs that we have in our community that we can use for media going forward. I also included welcome center visitation. Welcome Center falls under the tourism budget. So fiscal year to date for 2023 and 2024, we had 12,051 visitors. That is a bit of a drop because last year we had 18,503 visitors. Calendar year for 2023, we had 19,380 visitors. And since we're only in February, and this being the winter season, we only had 763 visitors. So just letting you know what that is. There's a link there for our Welcome Center page, our website, and our Google Business page. Trolley. We had a little bit of a struggle last year with getting a trolley driver, as you might know. So far, we're a little bit above, we're a little ahead of the plan here. We currently have two potential trolley drivers for this thing. We will have a definitive schedule soon. The trolley is potentially scheduled to run on Wednesday through Sunday from 10 to 5, beginning Memorial Day, and that will go on till Labor Day. As you know, the previous lodging, the tourism board purchased a tourism van. And a lot of people wonder, why aren't you using that van? The idea behind purchasing that van is because we were using the trolley for a program that that board had put together to as transportation from hotels to downtown events. And it was a little bit hard to get a trolley driver to drive at night, and it was also kind of cumbersome. So they purchased this van. And the specific purpose will be for us to develop routes from the hotels and bring them downtown to the events that we might have on any day of the week. It doesn't have to be just a weekend. Maybe we're having a mid-week event. And posting those events at these specific hotels, having specific pickup times and drop-off times, and then we can engage those visitors in our events more, you know, bringing them from the hotels and making that an option for them to visit. On a side note, as the tourism manager, I'm also a representative for Los Anamos County and the City of Trinidad on the scenic highway legends board, the Canyons and Plagues Regional Task Force Board, and the Santa Fe Trail Scenic and Historic Highway Board. So we have representation throughout the region.
Ashley, Marty, thank you so much for the update. We certainly appreciate the work that you guys do. And specifically, Ashley, if you just get back to the board, we really do appreciate all the hard work that they do day in and day out. I applaud this. Certainly, all of Trinidad will benefit from that. Hopefully, our small businesses see the increase that you guys make of it. Thank you for your update.
Any other questions?
I have one. You marketed and advertised the Winterfest very well. Now that the first Winterfest is in the books, do you foresee more sponsorships to expand from the outside area for future Winterfest events?
Yes, we do. We did it on a short time span, trying to pull it together early on, a little bit late in the season. So now, as it should be done, when you finish one event, you start planning for the next because you have learned what you did right, what you can do better, what you did wrong. And we'll take those, you know, things that we've learned and make it a better event next year.
That's good.
And sponsorship is one of those.
Yes.
I have a comment, not a question. I'm the council's liaison for the Lodging Tax Board, and I attended my first meeting last week. And since we don't have a full house, I want people to know that the Lodging Tax Advisory Board is doing a great job. They're bedding programs and advertising very well, and they work very well together. So you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
One more question.
When will we see the Vista Works marketing stuff to come out in media?
It's already been being put out. So Facebook posts, Instagram posts. I think they held on with the Winterfest. They did help with the Winterfest already. So they pretty much hit the ground running. I mean, they didn't start until, what, first of February, I think is when they first really started. And they hit the ground running. They got right on it.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3B, update from Noah's Ark Association, Lauren Devola.
Good evening. Thank you very much for giving us this time. 25 years ago, a group of caring women approached Trinidad City Council to offer their assistance to the city in providing a more humane and loving way to care for the lost, abandoned, injured, and unloved animals, and to be able to find them a loving, caring home. During the past 25 years, Noah's Ark Animal Welfare Association has worked very closely with the city to advance the level of care for this community's animals. During the period when the shelter was operating from the previous location, most of the regulations that were mandated by the Colorado Department of Agriculture's Pet Animal Care Facilities Act were suspended due to the condition of that facility. The current animal shelter was the culmination of many years and hours of collaboration between the city and the association. Once the new shelter was completed at the beginning of 2022, and animals were transferred from the previous facility, a higher level of care was required by the Pet Animal Care Facilities Act. The mandatory guidelines and administrative duties required by this act created the need for additional staff and more detailed oversight from qualified and experienced onsite administrators. The staff and caring for the animals has always and continues to be an amazing group of dedicated animal caretakers. If I could, I would like to recognize very briefly our new shelter manager, Pam Briscoe. Pam, you don't have to come up, but I want people to know this woman is amazing. Thank you, Pam. The additional administrative and financial costs associated with these departments quickly depleted the financial reserves Noah's Ark had worked so diligently to build for the care of the animals. Adherence to Colorado's animal care was paramount to Noah's Ark Board. But we discovered that the escalating costs to run the facility, along with inflation, decreased grant funding, and dwindling community support collided head-on with the needs for increased staffing and oversight requirements. During the new shelter's building phase, Noah's Ark Animal Welfare Association contributed $348,000 towards the building of the structure. These were from donations from the community. The board also purchased new equipment and supplies needed to house and to care for the animals, along with the office equipment to furnish the new shelter. These items cost in excess of $198,000. To support the city in running the shelter, the board has voted to donate all the equipment to the shelter to help the city defray the cost of running the shelter. The conics and storage buildings have also been donated to the city. I will be giving you an inventory of all of the items that we are providing. In addition, the board has also voted to donate our mobile surgical unit to the city to assist the shelter in providing services to the community such as vaccines, microchipping, and lower-cost spay and neuter clinics. These are all services that Noah's Ark recognizes as critical needs in our community, and we fully support the shelter in providing these services. The title to this unit has been signed over to the city. This evening, we also have two checks to present to the shelter. The first is in the amount of $314, which includes donations collected from the doggy bags located in various businesses in the city, along with the money received from the recycling of the cans. Both of these community-wide opportunities support the shelter. We'll continue with all funds given to the shelter to help defray the costs of caring for our fur friends. We also have a check for $8,905, which are donations received by Noah's Ark during our 2023 end-of-year fundraising campaign. The board recognizes the generosity of the community to support the shelter. Because the city cannot accept tax-deductible donations, Noah's Ark Welfare Association will maintain a separate account for anyone wishing to make tax-deductible donations to the shelter. Checks should be made payable to Noah's Ark with the note that these funds are to be used for the shelter. We will continue to disperse these funds to the city on a regular basis. It's impossible for us to calculate the number of volunteer hours that the board and community members have given to the shelter over these past 25 years. Unfortunately, operating the shelter with a limited staff and decreasing funds was no longer sustainable for our volunteer board. Noah's Ark Board sincerely appreciates the matter in which city councils stepped up to help as we work through these very difficult issues. Once we are certain that all 2023 financial obligations for the shelter have been resolved, the operating fund for the shelter will be closed, and all unused funds will be returned to the city. Noah's Ark Animal Welfare Association will continue to operate this thrift store using funds generated through store sales to support animal needs in the community. We appreciate the partnership and support Noah's Ark has had with the city, and we look forward to continuing to work together. Thank you.
Thank you for your update. We certainly appreciate the devotion of you, your board, and all the staff. Anyone that hasn't adopted an animal from there knows your care for animals, and your devotion to the city's needs really speaks to itself. So thank you for that, and please pass on our thanks. Any comments or questions?
I just want to echo what Mayor Pro Tim Williamson has said. I had the pleasure and the honor to work with you ladies, and it was one of the hardest jobs I've ever had, but it was also the most fulfilling, and I appreciate all of you so very much. Thank you for doing what you've done and to continue doing it. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you so much, Laura. Item 3C, Main Street Trees. Do you remember? Oh, no, I'm sorry. So Mayor Council, wanted to bring this to you tonight. So you've probably seen a lot of those are not, sorry. Well, I'll talk while we get those on. You might have seen some things on social media recently regarding our downtown trees. So I just wanted to give you an update of what we're looking at, what we're planning, and let you all know where we're going. So last week, and we've been talking about this for a while, a group of city staff, we went and identified trees downtown that are showing signs of damage to our infrastructure. It ended up being a significant number of the trees. So those trees were tagged just with some spray paint, just to denote those. We do not have plans right now to remove the trees. We're just doing our assessment and looking at what we might be able to do in the future to address those issues and concerns and move forward collectively. I want to say that we certainly recognize the need for trees in our downtown and the need for soft vegetation. And we definitely want our downtown to look as beautiful as possible. Karen Wolf's here tonight, and I think we all can owe her a big thanks for all the flowers she puts in our downtown. Obviously, Christmas tree, or Christmas lights are very important in those tie-in with the trees downtown. So I wanted to give you all a little bit of history of the trees. So I did have the opportunity to talk to Carl Gabrielson, and he was working for the city at the time that a lot of the trees were installed nearly 20 years ago at this point. And the trees were originally intended to be in place no longer than 10 years, and then they would be replaced. We actually even started a nursery out of the cemetery with seedlings to have that stock ready to go to replace those trees. Unfortunately, things got lost in the shuffle, and those trees were not replaced at that time. And now they've grown far larger than they were ever contemplated to be. So this isn't a problem unique to Trinidad. This is a problem a lot of cities experience. Certainly, with our sidewalk replacement program, we're seeing the impact of tree roots on our residential sidewalks as well. So it's something where we want to work really hard to strike the balance of providing our community those aesthetics, those features that really make a town feel good, but then also looking at ways that we can protect our infrastructure. So I'm going to turn it over to Bob, and then we'll chat a little bit more as soon as I let Michael here a minute. But Bob is just going to show you some photos that we've taken just to kind of show what the damage is and why we're concerned and are looking for solutions at this point. So I'll turn it over to Bob. Yeah, you can just hit that arrow there, and it'll go through. Yep. Technology is great. So here's, yeah.
Okay, so as you can see, these trees have been removed, but you can see what the damage did. It lifted the sidewalk. It's not only non-ADA compliant, just a regular or normal resident who walk up to sidewalk have a potential tripping. It's a serious problem. This is on Anamos, right outside the city hall here. Again, there are probably two and a half inches. That's on Anamos and near Main Street. That's on Anamis and near Main Street. There we go. It's lifted the tree grates. It's lifted the brick, the adjoining brick. There's areas where it's even lifted the curb and gutter.
Take a look. You talk, and I'll run this. It won't actually make it bigger for us.
There you go.
Yeah. We'll just do this way. Yeah. Of course, we can make it bigger. Here we go. Except for two boxes. Technology.
Oh, we have it on the back one here. We just don't have one of these two.
Yeah. There we go. We'll have to look at the small picture, unfortunately, but keep going, Bob.
Okay. So the apron around that tree has been raised as well as the tree grate. So again, somebody happens to drift over, we have a... Just for your information, anything over a quarter inch is considered out of compliance. Quarter of an inch. That's probably an inch right there, if not more. Again, there's another raised concrete apron.
About three inches?
Yeah, three inches. That's starting to raise the bricks around H Street. The tree grate is raised. Yes, we could remove the tree grate, but then it becomes... Now you have a... What are you going to do from that surface where the tree grate's been removed? This becomes a potential tripping hazard. That tree is young, and if you look... And they didn't take the picture of it, but if you look on the other side, it's already moved the curb and gutter a half inch, and that's a young tree. That's just... That's just the roots working on now.
Yeah, it looks like there's a lot of these. So I'll just kind of look through them, but you guys get the idea. We can certainly make these available, or you can also go look directly. What the concern is, is mostly public safety, of course.
I mean, we know all this. What's the plan to fix it? I mean, you can show us all the fools you want. This has been going on for years, and we haven't that fixed. So I mean, we don't need to show us the problem. We need to find a solution to fix this.
No, you're absolutely right, and that's what we want to talk about. So we just wanted to show the public what we're looking at and why this is a concern. But Councilmember Sheehan is exactly right. So again, going back to my original comment, these trees were never meant to be there for longer than ten years. So our assessment is that they do need to be removed, but we're looking at solutions that will bring trees back, vegetation, to replace these, that will also not cause future damage. So we're looking at all options. Again, we haven't decided anything, but the options would be tree planters, for example. Oh, examples? So I think we actually... Okay, so these types of ideas, yeah, where we can still have trees and greens downtown, but not necessarily have them be tearing up or... In fact, we've looked at ones that include benches as part of them as well. There are other infrastructure improvements that we could make to contain the roots of the tree in maybe a cement box vault below, which we can certainly explore that, too. The problem is eventually the tree outgrows the vault, and then the tree naturally will die because of the constriction, but it will protect our infrastructure.
So can I just share?
Yeah.
Your question?
Sure.
So this, our plan was is to get in there, remove the trees, remove the slabs that have been heat, re-pour them. That way we have a nice, smooth surface. We do have a project planned, as you know, for Main Street.
Right.
We don't know when we're going to get the funding. We've still got to get a grant for it. That might be two years down the road, but what we're trying to do is make the present trip hazard that exists right now.
That's what I meant. So we need to fix some of those now?
Correct, and that's what we would do.
Yeah.
We'd go in and basically any stones that have been lifted, we would remove, and then pour the concrete in there. That's the plan.
Yeah, and that's exactly why we did the assessment recently, and thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Sheehan, because we're at the point now where we're also worried about the underlying infrastructure as well, the service lines, wastewater lines, that type of thing. We know tree roots. They can penetrate pretty much anything. So we want to address the problem, but also be very sensitive. We understand that a lot of people like the trees downtown, and we don't want to just say, "No more trees." So that's what we're working on right now. The thing I did want to mention, though, Bob's right, we are contracting with SGM to do our redesign of downtown. In fact, I asked them in today's meeting when we can expect a public meeting to get public feedback on their design, and we're hoping to do that before June. But one thing that we're going to do as part of that project is bring in both an urban designer and a landscape architect to help us identify opportunities for providing trees and greenery downtown. So that's the presentation. Just wanted to bring that forward to you all and give you the heads-up of where we're at.
So when are we going to start repairing this?
As soon as we can.
I mean, we talk in the spring and fall, or I mean, this year, next year? I mean, we need a plan to get that going.
We wanted to start before the...
Neski.
The Neski season begins.
Yeah, which is in a few weeks.
Exactly. And we would probably approach it block by block.
Yeah.
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 What are the beginning and ending points that you're going to focus on?
That's a good question. So right now, we're looking at from Amazon to commercial, and then...
Anamis.
Or sorry. It's on the Amazon.
Anamis.
Yeah, it's a lot of trees. We're going to cut down the Amazon.
Actually, there's two other trees.
And there's two more passive.
Yeah. If we reach, when we head out to Centifield Trail slash the valley, there's only two. There's one on this side, I think, and then both on this side.
Yeah.
The north side of the street.
Are there tripping hazards in other places that are not caused by trees that you're also going to look at?
We're always looking at those, yes, and so we're mindful of those, and we try to address those as we can as well. There are some private trees downtown as well that we don't have access to, but some of the area behind the smokehouse and Bella Luna, and those are also causing problems on the infrastructure there. So we'll be having conversation with those folks as well about ways we can mitigate some of those hazards.
Any further questions? I'm sure you don't have a projected cost analysis for all this, do you?
No, at this time, just the city crews were going to remove the trees, and we were going to actually go in and also remove the raised stones and put those in ourselves. So at least we could do it internally to keep that cost down. If I was to throw a number out there, you know, we're probably twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars in materials. That doesn't count our labor, but true cost for concrete. But we have the ability to, like, car and light was going to assist.
Yeah.
Because they have the bucket trucks. Public works within all month of that, Phil.
I hear another question. Will you continue with replacing the dead trees on Commercial as well?
That's a good question. If we go back in, a lot of that infrastructure is new, and if you don't stay on top of it, it starts raising. I personally like to go back in with the planters on Commercial instead of the back in the ground, because we put them back... Those never got big enough to destroy the sidewalk.
They died. Some of them died.
I think they got winter killed, yeah.
So the trees that are in the little mini park right there, where David H.'s... David Frank's building is, now, are those city trees?
They are, and they've done well in the containers.
Yes, they have. You know what's nice about those?
They've been able to sustain the winters, because sometimes you worry about winter kill.
Yes, and they plant... Karen plants flowers on the base of those trees.
In the summertime.
And it's very attractive, very attractive.
And I'm glad you asked that question, Mayor Diego. I think anything that we plan as a permanent solution for Main Street, we'll extend those options to Commercial as well.
Any further... Go ahead, yeah.
Is this thing going to be open to making some public art to the public?
Absolutely. I think that'd be terrific. We're open to whatever. We want to be respectful of preserving our downtown and making it as beautiful as possible, but then also making sure the structures haven't cause their damage. But I like the idea of some public art.
Harry, no further questions. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
We'll just stay warm of any developments.
Yep, thank you.
The next item is petitions or communications, oral or written. Item four A is... Item four A is Trinidad State College update by Dr. Rhonda Epper.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Diego, council members, and staff. I'm really pleased to be here tonight to give you a brief update on how things are going at Trinidad State College. First, I'm delighted to report that our enrollments are up this year, and in fact, we are back to pre-pandemic enrollment levels, which is a good thing for the college and a good thing for our community. But a caveat that I need to include is that even before the pandemic, our college, like most rural colleges, had suffered enrollment declines for well over a decade. And this is due to demographic changes in our area, an aging population, declining high school graduation rates, and economic stagnation. But there is hope on the horizon. I consider our college as an agent for changing these trends. We are in a better position now than we have been in years to overcome some of these challenges and to make Trinidad State College and the city of Trinidad an attractive destination for students, workers, and businesses. So here are a few highlights of some of the good things happening at college. Besides the enrollment growth we are seeing, we are making improvements to some of our facilities with the hope of attracting even more students. Our fruit and fall library is undergoing an eight-point-two-million-dollar renovation with expected completion before fall semester starts in August. Some of the features of the new and improved library will be a two-story grand open entrance, a quiet study hall, a busy collaboration space with individual group study conference rooms, a business innovation hub, a makerspace, which will be moving from where it currently is located on the fourth floor of the Bird Building, new bathrooms on all three levels, refreshed classrooms and faculty offices with new paint, carpet, and furniture, a beautiful gallery lounge with a fireplace and a new circulation desk, and an improved outdoor patio with furniture, planters, and a curdella-shaped structure. The first level of the library will feature a renovated Launhimritzi Archaeology Museum with improved exhibit space, as well as a new cultural heritage center. We're also undertaking a complete renovation of one of our residence halls. Romero Hall... Romero is our smallest residence hall, and it's also our oldest, built in nineteen fifty-nine. This is a five-point-seven-million-dollar project that includes a new HVAC system. So for the first time ever, we will be able to offer air conditioning for students in the doors, in one door. It will have new bathrooms, a new laundry facility, a student lounge area, and new interior finishes throughout, as well as new furniture. And just a side note here, so you are aware, student residence halls are not eligible for state funding, which is why renovation of the halls has never been undertaken. We were able to cobble this money together for Romero. It was not easy, but it will take another twenty to twenty-five million to renovate the remaining three residence halls, which is daunting, given that there is no funding source available to support it, but I am committed to continue looking for solutions. Romero Hall is scheduled to be completed at the end of July of this year, just before students arrive in August. Also, you may have seen in the news that Trinidad State is part of a bill in the legislature that's been introduced to expand four university and college healthcare training facilities around the state. One of those is for Trinidad State's Valley Campus in Alamosa. This is a twenty-one-million-dollar project to renovate and expand the main building in downtown Alamosa, which is even older than most buildings on our Trinidad campus, having been built from nineteen thirty-six as an elementary school. We expect to move our nursing and allied health programs, which are currently in another building in Alamosa across the street, but we'll be moving those into the new building once it is completed and expand the number of students enrolled in those programs. If the bill passes in this legislative session, we would begin the RFP and the construction process by late summer of this year. Another exciting development that I would like to share with you is that we've been notified we are a provisional award winner of the Colorado Opportunity Now Grant for Emergent Campus, which is something we've been working on for the past year and a half. At this time, we are in final discussions with the grant team and OEDIT regarding the budget, so I'm expecting a formal decision and an announcement within the next three to four weeks. I am really looking forward to this project. I'm looking forward to working with the Trinidad School District and with the city in realizing the vision for Emergent Campus. So more to come very soon on that. On the program front, we're planning to launch a bachelor's degree in business administration this fall, which will be our second bachelor's degree. We currently offer a Bachelor of Science in Nursing, which is in its fourth year. Finally, we've been working very hard over the past several years to revive our visual and performing arts programs. As you may know, we've made a substantial investment in upgrading the technology in the Masari Theater, and we launched a technical theater program to complement our traditional theater transfer degree. We also have invested in our visual arts program by hiring a full-time faculty member and offering full tuition scholarships in all of our arts-related programs. For visual arts, we are partnering closely with the A.R. Mitchell Museum, because, as you may know, our art program at Trinidad State was founded by A.R. Mitchell himself. We host monthly lectures at the college on the evening preceding each first Friday opening with guest artists featured in the Fuel Gallery of Mitch. These lectures are well attended by students, staff, and community members. We are hoping to grow this partnership, and I would like to come back to council at a later date in my role as a board member of the Mitchell Museum to talk further about some of these ideas. And finally, we have big games this week in Trojan Athletics. I would like to ask the council and the community to please come out and support our Lady Trojan softball team at eleven AM and one PM on Thursday at South Side Park, where we'll be playing Colorado Northwestern Community College, and our men's basketball team at six PM on Friday in Scott Jim. The men are in their last few games of the regular season, and we are currently tied for first place with Western Nebraska, and that is who we play this Friday. So whoever wins the game this Friday is expected to host the regional tournament, and this will be great for Trinidad. It's lots of hotel rooms, lots of people eating at our restaurants, so we would love to have everyone come out and support the Trojans, ensure them on this Friday. With that, I would just like to say thank you for your ongoing support of Trinidad State, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Being the sender, oral communications, are we entering?
No. I'm not doing that again.
Dr. Epper, thank you so much for your update. I would absolutely urge the community to come out and support the Trojans, and thank you so much for your dedication to our community and everything that you do there.
Thank you, Dr. Epper.
Under item four B, we have David Wright for a pickleball update.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and you council members. I'm David Wright, as you know, speaking on behalf of our local pickleball community. Although I'm Chair of Park and Rec Committee, I'm not here in any way related to that role. I would absolutely urge the community to come out and support the Trojans. And thank you so much for your dedication to our community and everything that you do there.
Thank you, Dr. Epper.
Under item four B, we have David Wright for pickleball update.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and you council members. I'm David Wright, as you know, speaking on behalf of our local pickleball community. Although I'm Chair of the Park and Rec Committee, I'm not here in any way related to that role. So after last week's work session, Mayor Drago asked for some input from our local pickleball players and to tell you guys our priorities and our thoughts for these outdoor courts. We certainly appreciate your previous support in allocating funds last year. So hopefully we can move forward in this respect. So it's here on behalf of our, we think about 85 dedicated pickleball players here in town. We've received a lot of input on our own priority list and selected them from number one site, as well as two and three, the second and third best. So thank you for this opportunity again. First, I wanted to make sure you all received a written statement. Hopefully they've been distributed to you guys, and we also emailed those. Thank you. All right, I'll briefly go through our priority list for what we think is needed for pickleball in Trinidad. Why we believe Los Ninos Park is the ideal location for the new courts. The existing courts there now are not ideal for a variety of reasons. And I won't go into those unless you guys ask. Feel free to stop me at any time to ask any questions. I want to make sure you all understand our priorities for making permanent pickleball courts in Trinidad a reality this year, to focus. First, we believe building six courts is a minimum number to serve the current number of players, provide for future growth of the sport. We should offer proper courts to visitors who are driving through or vacationing here. And again, our group growth has been over 27% a year in the last two years. And for that, I don't have data, but we envision that continuing. So Trinidad promotes itself as a great location for outdoor recreation. Permanent pickleball courts are well within that definition, and we look far behind much smaller towns in this area of having permanent outdoor pickleball courts. Having six courts will allow us to put on tournaments, which will provide economic benefit to the city and businesses in the city as people spend the night, eat, dine, et cetera, here, and shop. Second, we really would like to see the courts built this year. We spent over a year talking about the new courts after the money was allocated last, I believe it might have been January, but I'm not sure. Only to be stopped at the very end when the council decided another location in the high school might be better. And, you know, I assure you, we'll be thrilled to have permanent pickleball courts in this town, wherever you guys decide. We just want to know that we're happy to offer our expertise. We have a library of expertise in this group of 85 people. We're happy to offer it to the city. We kind of are concerned that the courts might be built near existing or future residential developments, or even a single household can cause a major problem in the likelihood the neighbors will complain about the noise and all the lights. Denver Metro has had numerous problems with courts being too close to houses, and they've closed these courts after their successful use over a period of years. And I'm sure you have access to that data through our email as well. And fourth, we want to make sure that the access to these courts is easy and convenient to downtown. The bike path is a perfect example for the Los Ninos area. And there's enough parking here, of course. That we really are asking for permanent or temporary restment facilities. You know, some of the places you recommended, including those, Ark has a permanent bathroom there, and other places may go in a porta potty situation, but whatever, when you, you know, somewhere to move you ourselves. We would like a practice pickleball, a practice backward, like the tennis court area has, and we would be happy to offer our volunteers and to build this on the pad. And finally, we want lights so that the players can play afterward and at night during the summers when it's not so hot. A lot of people are prevented from playing pickleball here in Trinidad because they work. I know it's a four-letter word, but a lot of us will have to do that, and the only hours available at the community center are in the morning at this point. We believe all those priorities can be matched locating the courts at Los Ninos Park. We all like playing at the two temporary courts on the basketball court there. It's close to the river and trail, has good parking, centrally located, and it's a pretty location. That's the potential shade and wind block, if more courts were to be properly constructed there. You may have other priorities for developing Los Ninos in the future, but we believe building the courts there this year will only enhance future development of the area and attract more visitors to Trinidad. The written statement lists the other sites in town the council may consider, and I'm happy to go through the reasons we don't think those will work as well as Los Ninos, if you would like. I have listed some of the noise problems already.
I don't think we need to go through this, but we definitely, did you have anything more to say before?
That is it.
Okay. Mr. Wright, thank you so much for your update. We definitely enjoyed what you said, and I appreciate it.
I'm honored that you listened. Thank you very much.
And I appreciate it. I guess moving on to oral petitions on the list. And Mr. Down, do you have the timer?
Yes, sir, and this will be subject to the final. The difference is people who appear on the agenda as presenters.
I'll just read this before proceeding. We ask that, we want to thank you for joining us for tonight's meeting. As a reminder, please ensure electronics are off, like cell phones set to silent. Out of respect for all attendees, we request the removal of hats and other head covering during the meeting, unless required for religious or medical reasons. Participants wishing to address council are required to state their full legal name for the official record. Please note, the city council will not respond immediately to comments raised under petitions and communications. However, council or staff members will address and follow up on all inquiries as appropriate. We ask each speaker to maintain a respectful and courteous demeanor in a frame from personal attack when or use of foul or abusive language. A civil disturbance is appreciated and we expect it at all times. We request all audience members to respect other rights by not causing noise disturbances that could potentially disrupt the proceedings of the meetings. With that, Melody Lenuska on trees. Sorry if I mispronounced tree.
Lenuska. Good evening. Melody Lenuska here. I'm a neighbor, right up the way. Want to thank you all for what you're doing for the city. I'm sure it's difficult trying to take into account the needs of all of us, all of the citizens you serve. So as we leave tonight, find out that you don't have a plan to remove the trees on Main Street, although what I heard this evening sounded a lot like a plan. So I am still concerned about those 30 trees on Main Street that may be slated for execution, including apparently the tree in front of my building with a new pink X on it, a tree which I love. It comes into my living room window in the summertime to visit. It's the only tree on my street, and it brings me much joy and all of the other benefits of trees. Now, I understand that there are reasons why this destruction of trees is planned. I haven't seen much information about what these reasons are, except through the grapevine here this evening, which I appreciate. I would like to be more in the loop and know who the decision-makers are and what their qualifications are to make this important decision. I know a group of city staff went out and marked the trees. There are national standards for dealing with city trees, the ANSI A300. So I would like to know if those standards are being taken into account. And if the city decides a tree needs to be removed because it's dangerous, is the city immediately taking out the stump and repairing the sidewalk? I ask that because I was awakened at 5:00 a.m. a couple of months ago by what I thought was maybe a homeless chainsaw massacre, but it was actually the tree being taken out right across the street here. So that was a couple of months ago, and now it is a more dangerous situation than it was with the stump that people don't see. And, you know, I, let that go for now. Anyway, when is that planned? That was planned at 10:00 p.m. the night before, according to the crew that was cutting the tree down, when I went out at 5:00 a.m. to see who was being massacred. So there are many cities in this country, if not all, who have to deal with these issues. Some have found solutions that are not either/or, but both-and. Mobile, Alabama, for example, you'll cut a tree down, you find another way. So it's not a matter of people or trees. So I'm just asking you to please slow down, be transparent about what is going on here, take into account the desires of the citizens, and try to find a path that works for everyone.
Can I consult with you before you end your turn?
The next person that we have on the list is Margaret Affadaka on the house at 317 East Gotti.
Mayor, council members, and city administration, thank you for the opportunity that you give us, my neighbors, as taxpaying residents of Gotti Avenue, the opportunity to share some concerns we have regarding the house at 317 East Gotti Avenue, which was destroyed partially in a fire on October 20th, 2023. I live at 318 East Gotti, across the street from this burnt house. Pictures that I handed out, you picked the current condition of this house at 317 East Gotti, and I've also provided a portion of the anti-dilapidation code with highlighted sections, which as we, the neighborhood, resume, validate the safety concerns we'd like to bring forth tonight. We understand a process may be underway regarding remedy to the existing structure, which was scheduled for demolition on December 2nd, but as we understand, is pending testing for asbestos. In Article 5 of the Anti-Dilapidation Code, Section 547, that notes conditions or defects which deem a building or structure to be a dilapidated building. Down on Section 47, on the first bullet, and this is in regard to the house at 317 East Gotti, exterior doors and windows are missing, resulting in an ineffective barrier between the interior and the exterior of the building. Bullet 15, much of 317 East Gotti receives such an extent, damage to such an extent, that the structural strength or stability of the area is materially less than it was before the fire and is less than the minimum requirements of the building code for new buildings of similar structure or purpose. On bullet number eight, much, if not all, of 318 East Gotti is manifestly unsafe for the purpose for which it is being used. Right now, the former resident appears to sometimes inhabit the house despite its current condition. Bullet 11, it seems that the structure that received damage and has inadequate light, air, or sanitation facilities might be determined by the Department of Health or a city official to be unsanitary and unfit for human consumption, habitation. I do want to commend the fire department and the city police for all the times that it has come out within the last months to put out other fires in this burnt house and to attend to other matters of concern, especially for the safety caused by this house at 317 East Gotti. And with that, I want to thank you for the time, and my neighbors will share their safety concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Julie Morris. The subject is burned houses.
My name is Julie Ferrand Morris. I live at 308 East Gotti. Thank you to the fire department and the police department for always coming very quickly, waiting to call for help. And unfortunately, that's been fairly often in the last four months. In early October, a fire consumed the house at 317 East Gotti. Two other houses have burned in that general area also in the past four or five months. These burned structures are an attractive nuisance. They are drawing and harboring illicit activity, and they're in danger of collapsing, and they're an ongoing safety hazard. Even burned, these houses have been used as shelter for our unhoused, and they've lit other fires apparently to keep warm while they're trying to live in this uninhabitable structure. The city Anti-Dilapidation Code addresses this in Article 5, Section 5-45. I ask that the city move more quickly in resolving this dangerous eyesore in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Bond on the house at 317 East Gotti.
I have some handouts. My name is Christine Lynn Vaughn. I live at 301 East Gotti Avenue, three houses west of the burnt house at 317 East Gotti. As you know, the house burnt down on October 20th and was condemned at that time. It still stands, and the resident is still living in it. I'm going to call resident Mr. P. I want to voice my concerns regarding Mr. P. and the house that is still standing, and the fact that he and his brother, the owner of the property, are violating several codes of Trinidad's municipal code, offenses against public health, Section 16-57 and Section 16-66. Mr. P. has been seen digging a hole in his backyard and using it as a toilet, defecating, human excrement. The property has no water or sanitation facilities. Section 16-67, I feel that Mr. P. is a danger to himself and the public. When Mr. P. was cutting down bushes for me with his electric table saw, he sat down on the ground with his legs around the bush and the table saw between his legs, and he was going to turn the table saw on. I immediately pulled the cord from the electrical outlet outside my house, and I told him that was enough for the day. He told me he cooks on his propane stove and warms himself with his barbecue grill. He was seen having a fire in his grill right next to the tall weeds in his yard. He's had three fires since the house burnt down. The fire department will verify that. I predict that he will set himself on fire accidentally or set off an explosion. He is a nuisance when he steals from the neighbors, including myself, and we have to go to him and ask for the items back. He comes to my house asking for food and money. I've given him canned goods and big jugs of water in the past. FYI, he doesn't like clam chowder. He has been seen bathing in the snow. I witnessed him in January, sleeping on the porch of the burnt house in the middle of the day, and I'm guessing he was nude because I could see a bare leg, shoulder, and arm. He rants and raves loudly at times outside his house, and he has painted words and comments on the outside of his house in the past. After the fire, he asked me if he could access, could have access to my water faucet in my front yard. I told him no, because I didn't want to enable him to keep living there. He told me that Mrs. Lucero, on the east side of him, used to let him use her water faucet before she died and before the fire. I asked him why he needed water back then, and he told me that he had cut out the copper pipes in his own house because he needed the money. and he told me that he had cut out the copper pipes in his own house because he needed the money. Section sixteen through six three point five and section sixteen dash six four. I ask that the city bear down on the owner of the property to remove the condemned house, the garbage and filth on the property. And if the brother does not comply immediately, then I ask the city to remove the house immediately before Mr. P. catches what's left of the house on fire and causes an explosion, thus endangering the neighbors who live very close to his house.
One minute, ma'am. I'm sorry for interrupting. One minute left.
Oh.
Sorry.
I believe the three hundred block of Gotti has been forced to witness the daily activities of a mentally unstable homeless person, making it scary for women walking nearby and for our young grandchildren. The owner of the house to the west of the property has been trying to sell his house with no luck because of the condition and circumstances at the property next door to him. It is not fair a right to those of us Gotti residents who have been maintaining and trying to improve our property and the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thanks, lady. Thank you, Chris. Um, next we have Mary Genosi, I believe.
Garvey.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Garvey.
Garvey.
And I reside at two two nine East Gotti. And, uh, I'm here not to talk about our neighbor, but actually about our street. And, um, uh, I would just like to bring to your attention, I know you all can't be aware of the state of all the streets in the city. Um, Gotti Avenue, you know, really needs some attention. Particularly the one hundred and two hundred blocks are filled with potholes right down in the whole center of both blocks. Pottle, 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 and connecting them trenches and, and all kinds of, you know, just broken, um, pavement. It's quite dangerous. Um, people have to, to drive around the potholes, puts about in the other lane, the lane of incoming traffic. There's a lot of traffic on Gotti Avenue, even though we're a very small street. It is the location of, um, the Trinidad construction for food. And so we have a lot of trucks coming and going, coming and going. And we really need to have the street repaired for our sort of safety, the safety of residents and people who just use it to, 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 to burn. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, Jenny Green to speak on trees.
Hi, everybody. Thanks, Steve, for the presentation and, and all y'all on the tree situation. Um, my name's Jenny Green. I serve on Parks and Rec Advisory Board and now also the Trinidad Chamber of Commerce Board, started yesterday. To represent the outdoor rec sector in our main chamber structure, and also I'm the founding director of Trinidad Trails Alliance. I'm here to share some public sentiment about proposed tree removal on Main Street. I first heard about this tree issue when I was in New York in North Carolina, where there are dozens of trees lining every street, two to three stories tall, on every block, and somehow that works. So, I arrived home and heard about this situation. I'm very concerned about it, but, um, I'm not here to just share my opinion. I posted a mutual call for input about this tree situation on the Trinidad Trails page on Facebook. And I wanted to share some data in service to both the city and our city leadership, as well as to the citizens seeking clarity on this issue and help close the communication gap that exists within our community. The post received fifty-seven comments and two shares. Some of those commenters were duplicates, so a total of forty-one separate comments. Twenty-six of them basically just, um, weighed in on the side of leave, leave the trees alone. One sided for tearing the trees down. But more interestingly, fourteen folks shared questions and ideas that I want to share with you. Among them, number one, trees are an invaluable asset, providing shade, habitat, and visitor appeal for our city. Number two, is there a plan and can it be shared publicly? Number three, if removal is inevitable due to infrastructural needs, can it be done in stages, a few trees at a time perhaps? And I'll note that I've gone and taken my own pictures, and there are many trees that have, are not lifting the sidewalks, they are not doing anything but providing shade and habitat for birds. Um, four, is there a better way to inform and engage citizens on issues like this that are close to heart? Five, what are other towns with trees doing to preserve their trees? Um, an example that one citizen offered was, um, in terms of communicating these issues between citizens and the city. Um, could we have some sort of, um, uh, from the desk of the city manager is what this one person posted, or other communication vehicle so that we can avoid tension and conflict that will inevitably occur if those trees get cut down and without people there? Um, uh, I think among five, we are a tree city, and we have a tree board. Have they been consulted? Um, last, many people are lamenting um, the unfinished tree business on Commercial Street and would like to avoid a similar result on Main. Um, Steve mentioned that the trees on Main were only planned to be there ten years, and they've been there twenty. So what happened in, over the last ten years? Where's the plan? Where's the money that went with that original plan? Or was there a plan? I, you know, I don't know. In summary, I'd just like to say, what is the urgency? Because once you cut a tree down, it's done. Um, is it to save money and to save labor, to avoid accountability? Because that's what the public might be thinking. Um, or can you, as a council, live with the public sentiment that will result from irrevocably changing the face of our downtown and remove the last of our living trees? Or would you rather take a phased approach with a professional plan, not relying on streets and bridges and their chainsaws, but with a budget, benchmarks, and accountability built in, consulting your urban forestry board and other councils? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Next, we have, um, Jeffrey Mitchell on, uh, burnt houses.
You have to leave.
Thank you for the update. Um, Mr. Rigger, we do have the contacts of these people. I presume they'll be.
Yeah.
So, um, item five is the consent agenda approval. I entertain a motion for the consent agenda adoption, items A through D. All right. Uh, item A, approval of regular meeting minutes February sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I would desperately love to, to say a few words. Uh, I, I just arrived in town late, and I wasn't, my mom had told me I would have a chance to speak.
Is that admissible?
You know, it is, and I would ask council to allow it. Well, I rode up on the elevator.
Well, we'll, we'll entertain, uh, yeah, five minutes.
I, I appreciate it. Uh, thank you so much for taking the time, Steve. You strike me as a lovely person and probably a great administrator. Uh, I, I would like to see a different strategic approach regarding the trees. I, myself, it's, you know, people throw around the ADA concerns. I am disabled. I, and, and I, I see plenty of ADA concerns in this town, many which are more dangerous. You, you may be able to see a scar on my forehead here. Uh, this is because when it snows and the ice melts, there's a buildup of water in front of Wonderful House, and there's really no good way for me to get over there. I had placed an order for delivery, and, uh, sorry, for pickup, and I went over there, and I was unable to pass. I called and asked them to bring the order out, and she came out, and she didn't bring my food. I asked her to take my credit card. She said, okay, but she didn't even want to walk through. She could have walked around easily through a little bit of slush and grabbed my card and gone back in. She said, no, come over here. She wanted me to come over to the, in front of the dental building. Um, so I drove over there at full speed, as I usually do, and when I was trying to get up onto the, into the driveway, I snapped both foot front wheels off of this wheelchair, and I flew forward, smashed my head, and then I went to the ER. Uh, they put a little glue, and it's not too bad, but it's an ugly scar. My wife tells me about it every day. And this has been a couple of weeks ago. It's probably the last big smell that we have. Um, I, am I allowed, am I permitted to ask for, um, uh, people to raise their hands about something? Is that okay?
We, um, we don't, won't respond during public comment, but we, we'll, we'll entertain your question.
Let's, uh, I would like for you all to mentally raise your hand or not. If you, I, I, I would like to know, and you can keep it to yourselves, but ask yourself, please, have you been concerned about tripping and falling when walking through the city at, at any time? Have you been scared about tripping and falling specifically on cracks? Have, has this been a concern to you personally for your personal safety? And let me ask you now to ask yourself another question. Is, is it tripping that's the problem, or is it falling? I, I was a rock climber, and rock climbing is not a problem. Falling is the problem. And you can, the same can be said for slipping. Slipping isn't really a problem, and it's probably at least ten, maybe twenty, maybe a hundred times more likely than tripping. We, when, I'm sure that if you ask yourself, this is the next question, have you been concerned about slipping when walking across ice? It's so much more likely, and, you know, it's seriously, if something is going to be invested in, it could be in clearing the streets. I, for example, have trouble crossing the, the streets because all the snow gets pushed up on, uh, pushed up right in front of the sidewalk. So it's hard to get across streets, and then it gets, then it ices over, and, you know, ice is by far, in my opinion, a much more real concern. I believe that, uh, I would like to see, uh, because nationwide we have somewhat of a problem as far as liability. Everyone's afraid of it. Nobody wants to get sued. No one wants to be responsible when an accident happens. But at the end of the day, I would like to encourage everyone to take personal responsibility. When we go out into public, we understand that there are dangerous places. It's not just downtown. You can trip anywhere. You can go on a walk in nature, which is great.
One minute left, sir.
Okay.
Sorry for interrupting.
Uh, no problem. And I would like for Trinidad to invite people to the Wild West, where anyone can trip anywhere in the entire city. And, uh, I would like to make a parallel too to residential. Uh, should we go into residential homes and cut down their trees? Because the same problems will be happening in neighborhoods where children could trip and fall. It's a danger, but we have to deal with it to an extent. And I hate to see, you know, us not enjoy the beauty and, uh, and all of the other benefits that we get from having trees. Thank you, everyone.
Am I stating your name further, I guess?
Jeremy Lenoska.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five is a consent agenda. Uh, five A, approval of regular meeting minutes of February sixth, twenty twenty-four. Item B, reappointment of Kelsey Telaluea to the Library Advisory Board. Sorry if I obviously announced that. Uh, item C, approval of bills. And item D, approval of bill, uh, February third, twenty twenty-four through February sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? So vote, second?
Second.
Uh, vote?
Green, vote?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Devona?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Item six, public hearings, which we have none. Item seven, unfinished business, of which we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Eight A, consideration of Housing Now incentive program funding for the Mark CHFA Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project. Steve, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Counsel, um, as we discussed with Housing Now, uh, we were out of funds unless we saw some attrition in the program. Unfortunately, one of the downtown projects, um, I forget the actual address of this, that was, was the housing above Burmex, um, has withdrawn their application. Um, but we did have the opportunity, and we had, uh, we had an application for the Mark, which I believe you saw through the high-density residential zone change that you approved. Uh, that project, uh, it represents thirty-four units applying for funding from CHAFAP, from the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. That, uh, program also ensures affordability for a thirty-year period. So it's kind of like the Ferrari of affordable housing, um, as it relates to, um, affordability. CHAFAP's program, uh, at least long-term, uh, CHAFAP's program, though, is very, very competitive. I think actually this year, and Ted, you're on, I know, you probably can answer the question directly, but I believe they're over-appropriated, as usual, by double the amount of requests for the, the funding. Um, so city support is paramount for that project to be competitive at the state. Um, and, um, based on what we have remaining in the funds, the applicant even reduced their ads from a hundred and fifty to fifty thousand, plus seventy thousand in TACD, just so that they could give the city support. Um, so we're recommending a staff put through that attrition to appropriate fifty thousand in direct managing funds with a seventy, up to seventy thousand in TACD deferrals, uh, not to exceed that number, so we don't run into any issues with being over-appropriated again. So it's a total of a hundred and twenty for this project. Um, and I believe that is it, the funding agreement is, uh, a couple of things on the funding agreement. The funding agreement is contingent on the applicant receiving CHAFAP funding, uh, and voting for permanent. So if they're unable to or don't know if the CHAFAP award, then, uh, the funding would go back into the, into the cost.
Um, any questions for Mr. Chairman Frank?
Uh, yeah, I just got one. No, uh, is this, uh, project have a chance to get funded? I mean, through the CHAFAP deal, because you were talking about there, it's a competitive deal? And I, I'm just kind of curious.
Sure, sure. Well, no one has, even myself, who likens myself as a housing expert, no one can read the CHAFAP crystal ball. I mean, like, there are people who pay more than you. Um, what I will say is that what they do do at the, once the, once the application period is complete, is they publish where all of the, um, sites are in the state. Uh, Trinidad is the only rural county, well, not the only rural county, but the only rural county in southeast Colorado, um, that is on that list. The closest city, the closest rural community is Sawatch, um, which is two and a half hours. It's not even in the same market. Um, I would also say that this project also got a major award from Division of Housing, uh, which is also, tells you a little bit about where they feel like, uh, this project ranks in their priorities. So I think there's a lot of momentum.
Okay. Is there any of the other though-housing projects, uh, that are not going to be worked on?
On the Housing Now?
Yeah, the ones that we have funded.
So, uh.
I mean, I know there's a sure more out there.
So I, so I have my list.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Yep, yep, yep. Um, there is, we actually went through the list. As of today, permitted forty-three units, forty-three units under construction. Um, a hundred and thirty-nine are currently working through. Uh, and this is not just the one we funded up through the bills. Uh, there's another hundred and thirty-nine out there. There's really only one project, um, that, uh, has kind of languished, and that's the Depot Lofts. However, I did speak with that gentleman, and he is currently working on an application for Proposition one twenty-three. So I foresee having a decision relatively, uh, quickly on that. I also actually have a phone call with Elevation Land Trust on Thursday to get an update for both, because that was also that and City View twenty units, City Heights. So I should have a better update on Thursday on those two projects. Um, the remainder of these, the only other major project that I think is Uh, the remainder of these, the only other major project that I think is kind of on the, I don't want to call it epic side, but it's Holy Trinity. And we did just submit a stronger communities grant. That project is going to be, um, predicated on getting additional grant funds. So we'll know a lot more about that project in the next few weeks when the law gets back to us.
Have we, uh, have we put out any money for any of these projects completed or are they still?
We have, uh, Timberview Apartments, uh, we assisted with TAPD's and development fees. Uh, so all the ones that have been permitted, we've assisted with TAPD and development fees. But the actual payout, uh, was East Street School, uh, has a CO and Timberview Apartments will be, I think it's about two or three weeks away.
Yeah, I think they're done doing a job up there.
Yeah. So we're, we're starting to get there. Um, on the full Housing Now program, um, we plan to come back actually on the fifth, which March, who keeps screwing up? Is it March fifth or fourth, fifth?
These days.
Yeah. Um, we're actually, and this will be under Steve's update, we're actually meeting with TORA tomorrow. We want to look at possibilities for, uh, continuing the downtown. Because as you know, the council has committed to TAPD deferrals for true need restricted projects like the Mark. Um, we also want to continue that momentum in downtown. So we're having a conversation with TORA, uh, about how we could potentially continue to do economic incentives, but have those downtown projects vetted a little bit further. Uh, and also seeing a commitment from TORA to, to partner with us. Where those conversations go, um, we'll continue to keep you updated. And we'll probably have a work session on that too.
Are we seeing more interest in the downtown area?
We do have one project that we currently don't have funding for that has come in. Uh, and I know the funding is paramount for that gentleman to move forward with it. It would be six units. Um, and I also think that, um, having initial conversations with, uh, TORA President and Vice President, they're, they're interested in seeing how partnership would work with the city, um, and, and trying to leverage that. So that, that is kind of our, kind of our next big push on trying to make this program continue.
Yeah, thank you. No problem. Any other questions for?
No, sir.
No. Well, um, I, I have just one really quick question and if, if I miss this, I'm sorry. If, uh, if it's decided to move forward with, uh, funding it through the Housing Now incentive program, does that in any way, will that have any influence on the CHAFPA approval process or is it unlikely?
It will. Um, so right now, um, Ted, you're online, right? And here's application, they have, there's different ways to mark funds on their application. As far as, is it committed or pending? Is that right Ted?
That's correct.
And so, so right now, the TAPD's and the fifty thousand is marked as pending. And when they actually need to do their interview, they'll be able to tell them that it's committed. And so that local support will then be, be concrete for them. And then basically have a potential, CHAFPA will have the way, the potential of losing that, that, that additional hundred and twenty thousand of local funds, uh, that they can award, which will be a big factor in the decision.
Any further questions? Or discussion? Um, hearing no questions or discussion? Is there a motion for a, a?
Second?
Second.
Second.
Second. And will, uh, hold the vote for the councilperson, the attorney? If you have jeopardy, music gets a little bit.
Yeah.
I know a lot of people saw it was a good show. It was good talk. Mr. Devona, we've had a motion and a second. Um, and we're just going to have the vote on item A. Um, if you call the vote?
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Devona?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Item eight B is a consideration of pre-annexation agreement with the Maverick Incorporated. Okay.
All right, again, uh, the, uh, Maverick Inc. is looking to, am I remembering right? North, the northwest, northwest side of exit eighteen is looking to develop a gas station. Um, unfortunately, the site currently does not have the one-six continuity required by state statute to annex into the city. However, there are city water, sewer, and electric, no, gas services, electric is a different provider out there. Uh, uh, gas services, um, available to connect. State law actually also compels them to connect to city sanitation at a minimum, um, required by the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot rule. Um, the pre-annexation agreement's been drafted, uh, and Maverick has weighed in on that, uh, agreement, um, to allow them to proceed with the development of a gas station. They have worked with city staff and come in and done pre-development meetings to ensure that the city, that the city standards, especially for waters, utilities, uh, and zoning would match a future community, community, sorry, let me say it, community, this is our district community. CC, what's your?
Community commercial.
Sorry, community commercial zone, uh, as well as meeting the fire standards. It's advantageous for future annexation for Maverick, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, one being that they would now, once they annex, they would be under city, uh, utility rates versus out of, out of town rates. But more importantly, actually, the biggest one is fire protection insurance dropped drastically, especially for something like a gas station, um, by being in the city limits. So they are, they are wanting to annex if and when they become available or eligible. Uh, the annexation agreement does detail that they would have to file voluntarily an annexation petition within six months of that eligibility becoming, um, becoming eligible to do that. Um, beyond that, uh, I'm happy to answer any of your questions. Uh, they have received their special use permit approval from Los Angeles County.
Any questions?
I have a question. So I'm trying to visualize where this property is. How, where is it in relation to the, uh, the rest area?
It's on the other side of the main, where the bridge street is. It's on the other side of the.
It's on the other side of the?
It's on the north side.
Northwest?
Yes.
Okay, so how much property is there from this project to the closest city property?
So the closest, so there's, there's two potential, uh, ways that that property could eventually get continuity. One is that it could actually come from the eastern side of, uh, I-25, because you can annex under state law across a highway. So you could get continuity if a property on the north side of the east side of the highway also annexed. Um, otherwise, there are, we have, uh, initially talked about the potential, I'm talking to CDOT about annexing state land into the city, uh, where the, the existing rest stop is, because that does have continuity. Um, but that process is a little bit more complex because we're dealing with a state agency.
Right.
So.
So, um, where the industrial park is the city property on the east side of the highway, it, is that, do we own that property close to that county road that intersects the exit, the interstate on exit eighteen?
On which side of that?
On the east side. So you're saying that the continuity could take place if that was annexed, but we have property on the east side.
So we, uh, yeah, that's what I understood when you're asking. The property is on the south side of the east side of the highway. So the property, so the parcel directly north, uh, would have to potentially annex and then you'd be able to cross the highway. There's just not enough of a diagonal.
So that county road intersects the properties that we're talking about?
It's kind of crazy, but that little corner that you could potentially shoot across the highway, that's why they require one-sixth of the total length to be annexed. There's not enough, we'd have to do probably like a hundred annexations if we go off one foot.
So if the probability of annexation are pretty?
I would actually give it as pretty high.
High?
Yeah, because I think there's some pending things that I don't want, because of quasi-trivial potential moves right here.
Good answer.
But I think you have a high probability of seeing continuity sooner rather than later.
Okay, because then that poses another issue that, I mean, the fire department, if we're gonna eventually, I know that's not the question tonight, but it, we have to factor that into our decision. Now, is, does that obligate us to continue with annexation at, at one point? We can't provide city assistance as far as police and fire?
So the, so what's happening now is that the, uh, Maverick has been great in working with city staff to ensure that, especially because they're connecting to our utilities, your utilities anyways, that the water, sewer, and gas lines are being designed and being extended in under city specifications. And the fire chief has met with Maverick and, uh, designed the fire, um, connection as well as the hydrant locations to ensure that if, if and when they have to take that on, they could.
Okay. I just, my main concern is that we have the, um, human resources to eventually service that area with utilities and also our supply of, I imagine, gas and water. Because electricity is San Isabel up there, correct?
Yeah. And I don't believe there's been any concerns from, we, we've actually had quite a few pretty good meetings from the staff and the supply issues up there are, are not a major issue. And Chief here, you wanna?
Hi.
Hi, Chief. How are you?
Good.
Good. We were just, I'm just concerned about servicing.
So.
Servicing that area so far away from downtown.
Right, and we already service that. We service from the eleven to the eighteen, because we cover that whole industrial park where Burlington Northern is and all those businesses. So we're already covering that and the police are already covering that.
Okay.
This would just add a couple more stops for us.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the clarification.
You bet.
Okay, I, I have no.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Uh, any further questions?
I just want to know how you come from housing to gas stations now.
Ah, well.
No, you don't have to.
Bro. You got, you got a great planner behind you, so, um, these, there's a couple of these that are just a little more complex.
Is there, uh, um, is there, now, is there truth that there's a lift station going on the other side?
I'm not going to answer that because of future quality issues.
I never do it in summer.
Oh, there you go.
Mr. Chairman, um, is this, are there plans similar to what Maverick had planned before at the exit, closer to town?
Yeah, so they, they are, they did change locations because this is more conducive to the development plans. And, uh, again, the city services are, are a major, are a major reason that's like worse. So without city water, sewer, and gas, they're probably not gonna, I don't want to deep them, but they'd have a tough time proceeding.
And they're, they're agreeing through this agreement, they would be paying for all the stations, the city would not be paying for these stations?
Correct. They're paying, they're actually paying their own efforts.
Have they already purchased that land that's on that?
Uh, I know they have, no, not right now. You're under contract though, correct?
Sorry, are you, are you guys looking at me?
Yes.
We are.
Okay. Hi, uh, Matt Ryder, Site Development Manager with Maverick. Yeah, we, we have no issues with the pre-annexation agreement that's been presented to us and intend on paying the fees that have also been presented to us. Um, we're wrapping up our, our due diligence and entitlements, so we plan on, uh, writing checks once it's finalized with city staff.
Thank you. Go ahead. See you back.
Yeah. Um, any further questions from council? Um, hearing none. Uh, thank you, uh, for your presentation and Maverick, thank you for your continued interest in our town. We definitely appreciate that. Um, moving on, oh, so we'll be looking for a motion? So vote, second?
Second.
And, uh, call the vote, please.
Trill?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Devona?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to item eight C, resolution authorizing expenditure of marijuana revenue received by the City of Trinidad in fourth quarter twenty twenty-three. Cheryl, thank you.
Evening, Council. In your package, you should have received the resolution for fourth quarter marijuana twenty twenty-three. Fourth quarter marijuana yielded three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars. Of that amount, sixty-five percent has been allocated or requested by staff. Uh, that totals a hundred and thirty-one thousand, four ninety-three. And that's detailed in the resolution. Thirty percent share goes to reserves, which is sixty thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. Four percent goes to reserves of eight thousand, ninety-two. And then one percent goes to the outside agencies or Trinidad Community Foundation, two thousand, twenty-three, for a grand total of three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars. And staff is available. I believe in your packets, you received all of their detailed allocation requests. And they're available if you have any questions.
I have a question on the, the item for the urban forestry board. Three thousand dollars, just clarification, that is not for the main street trees or is it? Hi, Carol.
What's your question?
Is the, what is the three thousand dollars that urban forestry is requesting? It's not for the main street tree project, is it?
It's a project that we don't really have planned yet?
Yeah, it's not a project yet.
Yeah, right.
No, I would be asking for about three hundred thousand for that, so we can do proper research. This is just to plant trees because of the Tree City. We need to plant trees.
Yes.
We need to do an Arbor Day activity. We need to do education because we have such a stellar board right now. Finally, we have six members. Last year we did five events, four events, and we just did another one, so I want to keep doing that. So we need money to do publications, education, and buy trees.
Okay.
And right now we're sticking to parks, so we don't affect any infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Yep, um, uh, we need to just have questions as, as they come. Do you have a question, Mr. Tripp?
Yes, I do. Um, I have a question on the, the fish stocking for the purgatory. That one there, I, I'm just kind of, um, just kind of confused. Need clarification on this. So.
Hi.
Hello.
So, um, it's my understanding that Colorado Parks and Wildlife actually stocks the purgatory. And if, if they're doing that, then why do we need to have an additional stocking there?
So they stock a part of the river, I believe is above the dam, so we don't get any of those fish. And so in conversation, I actually spoke with Bob Holder, our CPW officer, and Carrie Tucker, the aquatics biologist for CPW, and also try to eliminate who we partner with. Um, actually CPW appreciates our efforts to stock downstream. The, the reason they don't is because we don't have a consistent water flow, but they believe that our stocking happens arrival and good for the river. And if we are attempting to create a, a robust fishing environment on the river for residents and for, um, visitors, they say it's a good thing. Their two biggest concerns, and they, they've always been and they, they express this time, is one that the fish are purchased from a certified fish hatchery, so there's no, um, infections or diseases in the fish. And that we do maintain a viable level. We're not overstocking because then we're, and I guess it's wasting our money and killing the fish. But I talked with them today. I told them how much fish, and just for council's information, you can buy a fish by the pound. So the bigger the fish you order, the less fish you actually get, the smaller the fish you order, the more fish you actually get because of by the pound. Um, I told her how much that we were anticipating and she was confident that that was okay and that there was no harm done to, you know, whatever the fish include that, what they stock.
Okay. Uh, yeah, that's all, that's all I have concerns with. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Taverly.
Sorry about that. I apologize.
That's right. Um, I, I noticed, uh, Purgatory Four Adventure Relay, you had a promotion. You're asking for money for basically kind of X-WAG stuff promoted. And I'm just curious, who owns Purgatory Four?
The City of Trinidad has.
Okay. And so. Okay, and so.
When, when is the purgatory?
The Purgatory Four is normally the first weekend in September, but this year, it's because of various conflicts, it's September 23rd, or, oh, shoot, August 23rd, probably.
Okay. All right, is there any further questions? I think it's, I think it's important to state that it's, we're very fortunate to have these funds and we're grateful to be able to use them in a way that benefits the, the city in as many ways as is possible. So thank you to staff for putting together this, and I think it, it would be worthwhile to note that many of these funds help the city overall with response through the emergency services, fire, the police departments, and also we're bringing people to the city. So I think it's just a really fortunate position that we're still in, as I say, we capable, the sun shines. So thank you for the presentation. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. So move.
Oh, wait, I have one more thing, sorry. I'm trying to get to the note, I apologize. Just a quick thing, and it's just a quick, I wanted to bring this one up, I was just out of curiosity about parks and rights. I just wanted to kind of voice my opinion on that. I think that their allocation is a little low, and maybe in the future, maybe they would request a little bit more, being that it is a new developing, they may be really going to posture that out there, I'd like to see that, if that's possible. I just wanted to add that, I apologize, thank you.
That's right, appreciate that.
Your comments welcome. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trillhill?
Second.
Trillhill?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Riega?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Moving on to item nine, council reports, we'll start from the side of the dice.
The strong arm.
The strong arm.
I, I gave my report on the board that I represent in council, but I just think it's, it's worthy of, of noting that Ed Bowman was a state champion in wrestling this year, and I know people that know his workout and his work ethic, and this young man is pretty phenomenal. And I would ask council that maybe in the future, we do a proclamation for him, I don't remember, we did it when he did last year, but what this, it's, see, I'm, I, I'm glad I have people that know this stuff, but Mr. Bowman reduced his weight class, so he went down a weight class. And the reason that he did this is because the gentleman that he had to wrestle against was a three-time state champion. So he wanted to make a statement, and a statement he absolutely made. And for a young man to do that and be dedicated, that I think we owe him the privilege and recognizing his accomplishments, it's, it's very nice to have that. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right, we got Parks and Rec tomorrow, so directly after this pickleball conversation, what will you talk about tomorrow at the Parks and Rec? So you give your report for me at the next council meeting. Mr. Delano?
Yes, I have something. I got to attend our, virtually, the CML policy meeting, which was my first one. I got to tag team it with Ogletree, which was wonderful. So we kind of went back and forth and had some great little discussions back and forth, and God, they do a lot, they have a lot of information that just flows through there, great, great debates back and forth on different issues, it was, it was wonderful. Also, I received some clarification on a matter that we had a little bit of confusion on. So I was, I spoke to them at CML today. So according to the policy committee structure, we are allowed by our population side, one voting number and one alternate. And those two members are, if able to attend the meeting and both collaborate back and forth, but one vote is allowed per, per group. And if one can't attend, then your alternate obviously has the voting power. So, but it's really good, and they do advise that two attend the meeting because they're both on the same page and they're able to collaborate back and forth and maybe get a better feel of what's passing through the House bills, Senate bills, whatever's coming through in the policy. So it was really, really interesting, I'm glad you guys nominated me for that, that was really fun. We came to the bench that day, but we got it all taken care of. Thank you, and that's all that I have.
No, I don't have anything, we don't have any meetings till the 29th.
Mr. Delano? I don't have anything from the Senate. All right, council, Ogletree?
President Culture Met, and they are working on several things, and the Trinidad Art Fest chairman came and made a presentation to us just so that we're aware of what's going on and would like the city's support with that program, which announces its third year, and it's a really well-done event. I got to sit in on Trinidad Golf Association for the first time as the city council alternate on that, and I think that's going to be a really fruitful kind of relationship. There are some questions that they had for the city, and I'm going to work with Audrey to resolve some of the things that they had questions about, but I, it felt really good to open that door, and so I'm glad for that, and then it was fun to tag team the four, that's all.
I have no report this evening, which would move us on to item 10, proposed by the city manager and city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, acting mayor, regular mayor, the council members. Just a couple of quick items. Michael, your man mentioned our meeting tomorrow regarding Tora, so we're really excited to talk with representatives of Tora and talk about economic incentives. Tora is very impressive these days, they're really wanting to dig in deep and do some really good things for the community, and so they're, they're really, they have some coffers too, which is great. So we're going to be working with them as much as we can to help with our revitalization efforts and identify opportunities where they can really assist. Tomorrow, they, we are having a meeting, and Riega will be involved in this with the, with our friends at Holy Trinity to talk about our river visioning project and get some feedback from them as to what they're looking for, looking forward to that conversation. I think it'll be a really good chance for us to sit down with them and talk about how we can maybe develop some things that'll be a mutual win for both the church and for the community as well. So I'll definitely give you an update on that conversation as soon as we, we have that. And then lastly, I had a great discussion with Pat Hallett today, and we are working very hard to move forward with creating an economic development corporation for our community, or at least exploring the idea. And I think that'll be a great fit, we will bring in as many partners as we can in the discussion over the next couple of months and work towards getting to a model that I think will really beef up our economic development here locally specific for Trinidad and, and Los Alamos County in general.
Mr. Towne, do you have any legal enlightenment for?
I do not, I do not. I, I don't have a rapport, Mr. Mayor Protonum. I would like to say though, if I might, good job tonight.
Yeah.
It was a well-done meeting. Maybe not as good as the mayor one.
Absolutely not.
But it was, and also I was thinking that there are a lot of you who have experience presiding over council meetings, and that's a good thing. Just thought I'd show that, that thought.
Thank you.
Yeah, so anyway, but good job, thank you, sir.
Thank you. That leads us to item 11, executive session for our conference with the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-402, Parts 4, the contractual obligations. Is there a motion to enter executive session? Second. And call the vote?
Thurman?
Yes.
Riega?
Yes.
Riega?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes, and we'll take a short recess to allow to transition to be.